We'll call to order the May 12th regular meeting of the Moundsview School Board. Good evening and welcome to our third episode of Remote School Board Work. We're going to start the meeting by asking the clerk to call the roll for attendance.
Bach.
Present.
Danielson.
Here.
Demay.
Here.
Glassheen.
Here.
Sager.
Here.
Westerman, present. Chair Weinhegen.
Here. Move item 1.2, adoption of the agenda. Have they entertained a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Bach.
Aye.
Danielson.
Aye.
Demay.
Aye.
Glassheen.
Aye.
Sager.
Aye.
Westerman, aye. Chair Weinhegen.
Aye. Motion carries. It will take us item 2.1, open forum. I do believe we have one submission. A reminder, open forum is being accepted through online submission through the website. And Sarah will read the comments.
Yes, tonight's comment was submitted by Anna Fishlove, 535 Lake Summit Court, Shoreview, Minnesota. Anna says, Superintendent Lennox and board members, thank you for the opportunity to share my comments regarding the important topic of children's mental health. First, I want to thank Jen Lowdean for her amazing work in addressing the gaps in mental health support at Moundsview School District, and for having courageous conversations with the affected students and families. I believe that the specialist positions that were discussed at the last board meeting will make a positive impact to our community in bridging the gaps between the school and the mental health systems that families are often floundering between. I also want to thank board member Westerman for commenting about the hiring of new staff for 10-month positions beginning with the fall. I would like to support our board member, Westerman, by asking the board at large to consider making the new positions 12 months long, given that summer can be a time when students with ongoing mental health issues attend summer school and receive mental health services. I agreed with board member, Westerman, that there is an urgent need for the community to receive supports sooner than later, and that waiting until fall would delay new staff from being ready to fulfill this need promptly, given that new staff have a month or more learning curve. Thank you Superintendent Lennox and members of the board for supporting students and families whose daily lives are impacted by the debilitating effects of children's mental health.
Great, thank you for that. Move item 2.2, announcements, and Shawna will read the gifts.
All right, gifts are received from Michelle Milan for $75 in Cub Foods gift cards for families in need at Highview Middle School. Carol Ducharme for reading buddies and helping hands at Turtle Lake Elementary School. Leighton Donovan for general use at Turtle Lake Elementary School. Coca-Cola Give King Solutions, Inc. for student activities at Bell Air Elementary and Island Lake Elementary Schools. Donations for the Ralph Reader Food Shelf, we were given from the following, and please bear with me, it is two pages long. 3M Charities Foundations. Aluris Mortgage, Cheryl Hobden. Centennial United Methodist Church in Roseville. Heidi Simon and Lisa Schuler. Christ the King Lutheran Church, Gary Floss and CTK Foundation. Church of the Redeemer. DeMaro Foundation, Catherine and Wayne. Faith United Methodist Church, Pastor Diane Christensen. Friends of the Poor, Vietnam, Sister Rose Vu. Hunger Solutions, Minnesota, Joe Walker. Incarnation Lutheran Church, Laurel Ingleman and Becky Benson. Kowani's Club of North Suburban, Golden K, Don Engel and Kowani's members. Messiah Lutheran Church, Allison Burko and Heather McAllister. Minnesota Health Insurance Agency LLC. Multitech Systems, Terry Boe. New Brighton Moundsview Rotary. North American Banking Company, Michelle Blitsky. North Suburban Edina Realty, Kevin Miller. The Pinewood PTA. Presbyterian Church of the Way, Amy Davies and Pastor Parker. Pursuit Community Church, Pastor Mark. Shoreview Community Foundation, Sue Knudsen. St. John the Baptist Catholic Church, Terry Shia. St. Odilia Catholic Church, Jim Schumbeuer. Stone House Custom Catering, Lisa Stonehouse. Sunrise Methodist Church. Tradition Capital Bank, Lauren Withers. United Church of Christ, New Brighton, Pastor Amy and Joe Broberg. The Valentine Hills PTO. Joyce Alstrom, Mary Anderson, Craig Atkinson. Sonia Burns, Doug and Julie Bowman. Ruth and James Bauer. Jennifer and Brian Bradway. Brunt Norquist. Sharon Carlson and Joanne Christians. Heidi and Jay Carlson. Carol Christie. Christopher McCaffey. Elaine and Foster Cole. Jacob Conklin. Daron Valup. Erin Dubrius. Beth and Mike Donahue. Roger Erickson. Patrick Gary. Carol Green. Diane and David Gringle. Peter Groden. David Haas. John and Rosemary Hunt. Isaac Scallion. Jean and John Isaacson Fund. Jennifer Sandell. Jennifer Sarre. Joel Stanch. Benjamin and Michelle Johnson. Joshua Milligan. Karen Humble. Carl Eckberg. Janet and Alan. Mike Hats and Katie Calls. Kirk Livingston. Stefan and Sheila Kleats. Catherine Kohler Ernest. Jeffrey King. Sally and Daniel Larson. Leah Hoyta. Linda Busby. Mark Limkenman. Mark Solfest. Mark Stelmack. Maddie and Don Martin. Lisa and Greg Mattson. Amy and Kevin McNabb. Andrew Minion. Doris Mundell. Nancy Hedman. Nancy Nielsen. Omar Awad. Daniel and Charlotte Annika. Paul Mitchell. Peter Sadler. Gloria Petis. Harry Premier. Tony Ron. Shelley Renner. Robert and Penny Werratt. Richard and Sylvia Rogue. Lori Schneider. Sheena Pickens. Sherilyn Timothy Skildam. Alicia and David Smith. Barbara Stack. Stephen Garbay. Mary Ann Stevenson. Jean and Don Suzerk. Philip Thompson. Stephen and Noreen Thompson. Jean and David Tillman. Paul and Ruth Tilquist. Timothy Leverance. Anonymous donation. Misty and Delian Vanlaar. Nancy Victoria. Susan Vengar. Lori Hauser-Vinyon. Mary Whalen. Kathleen Willnet. Michael and Jonathan. Michelle and Jonathan Wood. Suzanne and Anthony Urick. And the total donations this period were $227,724.50. It is recommended that the board accept these gifts and extend our thanks to the donors.
Great, and thank you to all of the donors. Certainly a bright spot as we manage through this crisis. And unprecedented times, the community and the way that they're showing up for each other. Additional announcements, upcoming meeting dates, June 9th at 6:00 PM, there is a work session of the board, followed by a 7:00 PM regular meeting of the board, both held in this online format. And June 23rd, 7:00 PM, there is another regular meeting of the board. That will take us to item 2.3, Superintendent's Report. Superintendent Lennox.
Thank you, Jonathan. Tonight, I just want to take an opportunity to highlight an announcement that was made earlier today. Specifically, I want to welcome Carol Campa to the school district. Carol has been named principal at Irondale High School. She is a career educator with more than 18 years in administration. Carol worked in Texas and Wisconsin, as well as Minnesota, districts North St. Paul and St. Louis Park, prior to spending her last 16 years at Kennedy High School in Bloomington. Carol's a New Brighton resident, and she told us that she has seen firsthand the innovative programs and countless accomplishments of the Irondale students and staff, and said that she really looks forward to leading and serving the amazing Irondale school community. Now, given the current social distancing requirements, we are going to be looking for creative ways to be able to introduce Carol to our community over the coming weeks. But in the meantime, I wanted to take this opportunity to welcome Carol to our district. And with that, I'll end my report.
Thank you, Chris. Might be fun to get her on for our work session or upcoming board meeting for an introduction, if that's possible.
Absolutely, we'd love to do that.
Excellent. That will take us to item 3.0, approval of the consent agenda. Have they entertained a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Bach.
Aye.
Danielson.
Aye.
Demay.
Aye.
Glassheen.
Aye.
Sager.
Aye.
Westerman, aye. Chair Weinhegen.
Aye. Move item 4.1, termination of probationary staff, and I believe Amy Jo Johnson will be presenting.
Good evening, school board. It is necessary to terminate the contract of a probationary staff listed on Attachment A. This is due to decreases or changes in enrollment, elimination of a position, uncertainty of funding, lack of funds, performance, or return of leave of a senior teacher. Does the school board have any questions? It is recommended then that the certified staff listed in the attachment be terminated pursuant to the attached resolution.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Bach.
Aye.
Danielson.
Aye.
Demay.
Aye.
Glassheen.
Aye.
Sager.
Aye.
Westerman, aye. Chair Weinhegen.
Aye. Motion carries. Move item 4.2, final placement of certified staff on unrequested leave of absence. Amy Jo.
Okay, the school board took action at its meeting on April 9th, proposing to place a number of certified staff on unrequested leave. The individuals listed on the attachment did not request a hearing. Failure to request a hearing deemed aspens to the proposed action. Any questions? It is recommended that the board adopt the attached resolutions placing the staff listed in the Attachment A on unrequested leave.
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Bach.
Aye.
Danielson.
Aye.
Demay.
Aye.
Glassheen.
Aye.
Sager.
Aye.
Westerman, aye. Chair Weinhegen.
Aye. Motion carries. It will take us to item 4.3, approval of transportation service agreements, and I believe Carol will be presenting this evening.
Yes, good evening, board members. Thank you. Tonight, I have for you a request to approve four type-three transportation contracts. In your packet, you have the information that goes into the details of those contracts. If you recall, we do have a DOT goal this year to complete transportation contracts effective with the start of next school year. And so tonight, we're just bringing you four of the type threes. We are continuing to negotiate with some additional providers to bring to at a later date. But tonight, to get these four done would be extremely beneficial. The four contracts that are before you, the contractors are responsible service providers and are capable and consistent with applying applicable state laws to transportation services for students. These contractors agree to a cost of service, that is, the lower cost options that were responding to the specifications that we published. In addition, the transportation services will continue to be provided and consistent with district policies with regards to transportation services. So welcome, any questions that you have with regards to the contracts?
Carol, this is Sandra. I guess I would just like any commentary you might have as to, I know that our transportation providers have been struggling as of the last couple of years recruiting drivers. I'm wondering, as these four contracts have come forward, you know, how did that conversation go and what type of assurances did the contractors provide that they're, you know, that they're going to be able to meet the staffing needs for their companies?
Well, we continue to have negotiations with our yellow bus providers. The four contracts that are before you tonight are for type-three services. And so while these drivers do require specific training to operate on type-three services for students, they do not require the CBL license of driving a yellow bus. So therefore, the employment challenges don't exist as extensively with the type-three providers as they do with yellow bus transportation.
Good to know. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Hearing none, then it is recommended that the school board approve the student transportation service agreements with the four providers, R&amp;D Transportation, Twin Cities Transportation, Safetree Transportation, and United Transportation Services for the period beginning on August 1, 2020, and ending July 31, 2022, with an option to extend for an additional two one-year contract periods.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Bach.
Aye.
Danielson.
Aye.
Demay.
Aye.
Glassheen.
Aye.
Sager.
Aye.
Westerman, aye. Chair Weinhegen.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. That will move us to item 5.1, District Operational Plan 2019-2020. Before I turn this over to Superintendent Lennox, I wanted to provide a little bit of context. As most people know, the District Operational Plan, or DOP, is the document that we work with the superintendent in partnership with to establish a set of goals for the year. And a number of those goals are board priority goals. For example, things like the facilities and student mental health. We spend a lot of time as a board working on that. Other goals that we just measure the superintendent's performance are embedded within the district operational plan. This is the time of year where we would normally be hearing an update on that plan. The plan would be near completion, and we would be preparing to evaluate the superintendent and his team and the year of work and the progress that they had made. Early last week in an executive session, we began discussing with the superintendent some of the unprecedented times that he and his team have been managing through, and the potential to explore amending the district operational plan, which in and of itself would be somewhat unprecedented. At a work session last week, the board had an opportunity to, you know, provide the superintendent an opportunity to give us an update on the plan, share some areas where, just based on timing and the fact that they were going to be, you know, executed on towards the back half of the year, just weren't going to get accomplished. And also a recognition that in the midst of navigating through this global pandemic and crisis, you know, migrating our entire system to distance learning, the reality that this board would like the opportunity to evaluate the superintendent and his team based on their performance in these unprecedented times. So we did ask the superintendent to bring to us this evening both an update on some of the items in the district operational plan. I believe there are three goals that will need to be adjusted based on timing. And then the proposal of an addition of a formal goal around navigating through this crisis and the move towards distance learning. So with that, I will turn it over to Superintendent Lennox for a report. And then we will be looking for formal board action to amend the district operational plan as we head into our evaluation phase.
Thank you, Jonathan. And for the public, as Jonathan just mentioned, each spring, we do formally come forward to offer progress that's been made on our district operational plan goals each year. This year is no different. We definitely want to provide that. However, it's significantly different due to the COVID-19 pandemic. That really has shifted our focus for the fourth quarter completely to distance learning and meeting the expectations that were set forth in the governor's executive order. Last week, we did have a chance at the board work session to go through these in more detail. And as an overview, rather than go through each one of the 10 goals in detail, I thought it would be important to just highlight the changes in the specific goals that were being impacted as we move forward. So for the public's benefit, as an overview, I want to share that the district operational plan had 10 goals this year. Our leadership team will have successfully met seven of those goals by the end of the school year. However, three of the goals were cut short due to COVID-19 this spring. And specifically, the goals impacted were the expansion of adult enrichment opportunities, the mapping of learning supports, and the development of personalized learning environments. So I want to say a little bit about each of those. The activities associated with the goals were unable to happen in large part due to the state's stay-home order and our sudden movement into the distance learning. While significant progress was in fact made in each of the areas, the original goals are not able to be fully completed due to the limitations around access to both people and programming. So for example, the expansion of adult enrichment, while tremendously well-planned, couldn't be executed because we were not able to offer the in-person programming this spring, and frankly, potentially even into this summer. So our reality became one of canceling existing offerings rather than being able to expand into new areas. The mapping of learning supports was intended to happen with groups of staff from each of our school buildings. Now, that became impossible once we were asked to leave our schools, stay home, and engage in distance learning for the balance of the school year. Like so many other areas, we actually are attempting to do this work electronically, but it has significantly changed the original goal. We don't know that we'll be able to do the same activities virtually that would have been done with people in person. And then finally, the development of personalized learning environments. That was completely changed when students and teachers had to move into distance learning. We left our traditional classrooms and moved into virtual classrooms for the balance of the school year. So rather than focusing on environments that included flexible furniture, differentiated instruction, various student groupings, our staff focused their entire attention into learning new online tools and engaging our students in the practice of distance learning. Now, we're certainly learning things in that new environment, and we can and will adopt some of those in the future. But again, that is very different from the outcome and original purpose of that goal. In addition, I think it is important, as Jonathan mentioned, that the board consider evaluating the team against the work that has been done relative to distance learning and the additional expectations of the governor's executive order. That certainly was not originally a district goal, but it became probably our top priority during the fourth quarter of the school year. Our time, energy, and effort have been focused on meeting these expectations since mid-March. And it is under these conditions that we will finish the school year. So this evening, I would recommend that the existing 2019-2020 district operational plan be amended to reflect the dropping of the three goals that were mentioned, cut short due to COVID-19, and the addition of the goal based on distance learning in the governor's executive order. I think this will provide the board with a more accurate representation of the work accomplished and the goals that will be achieved by myself and the district administrative team. Of course, we will go in and provide board members a full write-up of each and every one of the goals for your review, and we'll make sure that you have that in advance of the June 9th board meeting. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions board members may have.
Hearing no questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to amend the district operational plan for 2019-2020 to remove the three goals that were outlined and add the goal around response to the governor's executive order in COVID-19.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
You know, I guess I just would like to comment, if I could. I do think this is very appropriate. And, you know, I think everyone in the community recognizes how drastically work has changed for not just our school district but others. I think it's very appropriate that Chris and the team are measured against this shift in focus. And I'm happy to, happy this is brought forward for us to amend and use this as a new evaluation tool.
Thanks, Sandra. I completely agree. Any other thoughts or discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Bach.
Aye.
Danielson.
Aye.
Demay.
Aye.
Glassheen.
Aye.
Sager.
Aye.
Westerman, aye. Chair Weinhegen.
Aye. Just before we leave the district operational plan, I will just note that while we wrap up the 2019-2020 work, we are already in the process of partnering with the superintendent to begin evaluating what 2020 and 2021 will look like. We're recognizing that there is some uncertainty in all of that. When we will get back to in-person class, what that will look like, we'll all help shape and inform that. But I think what we can be certain of is there is uncertainty ahead. A week ago, we learned that the state's $2 billion surplus would be a $2-plus-billion deficit. We can certainly anticipate some state-level funding challenges. I know as a system, we always budget conservatively, but I think we can anticipate that even that conservative budgeting could be tested in the coming years. We're fortunate to have a community that has consistently supported us at the local level, and that will certainly help us to continue to deliver the exceptional, you know, service and education that we do as a system. But we're going to have some tough times ahead as a board and as an administration. And we're going to need to evaluate, you know, all sorts of programs. So look forward to bringing forward in the coming weeks and months, some thinking around what that 2020-2021 district operational plan looks like and how we are going to, as a system, respond to kind of the continued recovery and fallout from this COVID-19 pandemic. That will bring us to item 6.1, updates. We'll start with AMSD and legislative. I might have just stolen a little bit of the thunder.
You have, Jonathan. We haven't had an AMSD meeting since our last school board meeting, so nothing to report there. And as you reported, the state budget office has let the legislature and the governor know that we're looking at a $2.5 billion shortfall in the next biennium. And the legislature is meeting in St. Paul, and will conclude their session on May 19th. But there may be special sessions this summer, given the budget situation.
Thank you for that, Jim. It will take us to 916 and Ramsey County League. Mary Jo.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. At 916, we got a presentation on an extensive year-long classification and compensation study done by an outside vendor consultant, presenting where they felt updated job descriptions were needed to ensure jobs are classified appropriately, ensure the compensation is competitive and within ranges, and establish procedures to keep those systems up to date and equitable. And the board did vote to adopt that. We got an updated this year's budget from the superintendent and her cabinet, as well as a look at possibilities for next year's budget as well. Let's see. I guess that's about it. At the Ramsey County Legal Local Governments, we had a virtual roundtable discussion, and it was very good. There was over 25 legislators, mayors, council members, and school board members, including that were on the call. Everyone had a chance to talk. And it went quite well. We got some great feedback. If you haven't taken the Ramsey County League survey, if you would like to do that, it's on the website. Also, we will be providing results to a Metro City survey Mike Lynn talked about in his presentation. There'll be a third newsletter coming out probably in a week, so watch for that. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mary Jo. We'll take us to item 7.1 School Board Member Reports. Anything to report?
I just, just that Valentine Hills had a virtual PTO meeting, and Todd and Lindsay gave some good updates on plans for kind of wrapping up the end of the school year and what their plans are for transitioning students to their next grade levels. So it was a good meeting.
Any other School Board Member Reports?
You know, Jonathan, I don't know if you're planning on mentioning anything about end of school year, but if so, I will, I'll defer, but just wanted to, this is our last meeting before, before school's out, right?
It is, I'd welcome your thinking on that, Sandra.
I don't want to steal the chair's thunder.
You're just fine. I yield.
Okay, okay. Well, I just, I just want to, one, recognize the, you know, unprecedented times, I know where that word is used all the time, but the seniors for our high schools, and what a, what a different year this is for everyone, but especially for our seniors, and very difficult way to end our high school careers, not having a traditional graduation ceremony. So I just wanted to recognize that, and I'm, I know our schools, our leadership is moving forward with some really great plans and to do it virtually, but I just wanted to, you know, for us to recognize that as a board and wish everyone the very best and to, you know, to be safe and take care of yourselves and stay healthy, both into the last few weeks of school, but also throughout the summer for everyone. Thank you.
Thanks for those thoughts, Sandra. I'm not sure I could have said it better myself, so I will just offer a ditto to that. Is there anything else to come before the board? We are adjourned.